Stand in standing, please. On a special day of government day, I offer this prayer, directing it to our young adults here from Fulton High School. Lord, help us look through the eyes of our youth. Let us see the great potentials that they have to offer us in the future. They someday will be leaders who will demonstrate kindness, love, compassion, respect, responsibility, friendship, and loyalty to mankind. Let them never lose sight of this. They have a job to begin for the future. Let it continue each day. Let them never forget the needs of the people. Let them express their ideas, concerns, and problems. Give them the grace and insight to find a good future for themselves and for their fellow man. Let them see the world, and mankind is good. Let them do good things that all may benefit by their actions. Amen.
I don't know how we're gonna do this. It's easier this way.
Do you want to do it before we do the roll? Do that next, and then we'll have them call. Yes, please.
Your Honor and members of the common council, I'd like to introduce the students tonight who are participating in Youth Government Night, and also the prospective department heads and city officials. I would also like to thank the Elks for another great dinner and for inviting us over another year. Representing our Mayor Michael K. Stafford will be Charles Nasca. Representing our First Ward Alderman John Lincoln will be Justin Levin. Representing our Second Ward Alderman Edward Sahasky will be Chris Mitchelson. Representing our Third Ward Alderman Robert Weston will be Jim Hanlon. Representing our Fourth Ward Alderman Mark Sherman will be Jeremy Chetney. Representing our Fifth Ward Alderman Harley Thompson will be Sean Moore. Representing our Sixth Ward Alderman Ryan Woodward, Sr. will be Rachel Kessner. Representing our City Attorney David Hawthorne will be Scott Daniels. Representing our department heads, our department head James Labota, our City Chamberlain, Daniel Vaughn, our Chief Code Enforcement Officer, our Chief of Police Mark Spahn, our Assistant Fire Chief Anthony Gria, our Recreation Superintendent Barry Ostrander, our DPW Commissioner Raymond Graham, our Water and Sanitation Commissioner Roger Parsons, and our City Assessor Diane Moore. And finally, our Personnel Director Edward Garrel will be Chad Bush and Joe Griffin.
Thank you, Joe.
Welcome, Your Honor.
We would also like to welcome Girl Scout Cadet Troop 734 was with us tonight and their leaders Patty Termitji and Mary Ann Ingerson. Thank you for attending the meeting.
May I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mayor Stafford?
Here.
Alderman Lincoln?
Here.
Alderman Sahasky?
Here.
Alderman Weston?
Here.
Alderman Sherman?
Here.
Alderman Thompson?
Here.
Alderman Woodward?
Here.
All present, Your Honor. Resolved that the following letters of claim are referred to our City Attorney, letter of claim submitted by Mr. Dale Barton, 161 West Third Street, Fulton, New York, for property damages alleged to have occurred on April 27th, letter of claim submitted by Mr. Cleveland Caswell, 18 Persian Drive, for damage to his property alleged to have occurred as a result of a burst water pipe on January 28th, 1998.
Is there a please for motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Do you have a little, Joe?
Yes, I do.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carried.
Motion made.
Item two.
Item two. Whereas at a meeting of the common council held on April 7th, 1998, City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 5th, 1998, at 7:00 PM in the Common Council Chambers of Municipal Building, Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed local law which would amend subsection 165/58 of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the City of Fulton as it relates to parking slash patience only laws. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Are there any comments from members of the council? Any comments from the floor?
I declare the public hearing closed. And do I hear a motion?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carried.
Motion carried. Item number three. Whereas at a meeting of the common council held on April 21st, 1998, City Clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 5th, 1998, at 7:00 PM in the Common Council Chambers of the Municipal Building, Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed local law which would amend Chapter 177 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Fulton. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open. Any comment from the council?
No, Mike, could you have something to explain this? Basically, this is a request that we received from the Planning Commission to amend, make these amendments. All these sections are sections which require, in the zoning area that they're in, they require planning board, or they require site plan approval before the various items allowed there can be, in that subsection, can be implemented. And they just wanted to add, in each of those districts, the municipal public or private utility structure. And that was all the information that was presented to us in the Legislative Committee. We didn't have a problem when we passed it on. As far as the actual impetus for this or the reason therefore, I don't know.
Any other questions?
Any comment from the floor? Any comment from the floor?
No, that's, that's the next one, I think.
Is there a motion?
No. I declare the public hearing closed. Just reread it.
Whereas, members of the common council, members of the public, and all in attendance were given an opportunity to present written or oral comments regarding said proposed local law. Now therefore be it resolved that proposed local law amending Chapter 177 of the zoning ordinance of City of Fulton is hereby adopted in its entirety. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Whereas at the meeting of the common council held on April 7th, 1998, City Clerk was authorized to direct, directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of May 5th, 1998, at 7:00 PM in the Common Council Chambers of the Municipal Building, Fulton, New York, relative to the proposed local law which would amend Chapter 162 of the City of Fulton entitled Vehicles Abandoned. Hearing, oh, Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Any comments from the council?
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, Your Honor, after we have the hearing, I'd ask the council, instead of voting on this tonight, to send it back to Legislative Committee? Would that be okay?
Is that a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make that in the form of a motion if the council pleases.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion is carried.
We will continue with the public hearing. Any comments from the floor?
My name is Donald Walsh. I live in the City of Fulton. And I just don't understand what this means by winter rats. They cleaned up the city pretty good for junk cars. There's still a few of them around that I see on the streets that they haven't picked up or notified anybody about. And I can't understand how they can change it and have a winter rat with no license on it. In other words, what I feel is there's gonna be a lot of people, when you go to question them about a winter rat, they're gonna say, this is a winter rat, it could be a junk car. How are you gonna define it? Because there's been a lot of them picked up in the city, and there's some now that I can show you. I don't want to say because of the people on the, the council people are supposed to know about it. And I'm not, for some of the worse, if there was in my word, I'd tell them about it. But I still think that they should keep it as is. And the people that's got winter rats, when they made this law, they talked about covering up, putting a cover over them, and putting them aside so that they're halfway decent, not just sitting in the yard up on a rock or up on a jack. And that's what we had before. And at least it's, some of them are cleaned up around. There's four or five cars in people's yards, they just left them there year after year. And the City of Fulton is looking 100% better than it has in quite a while. But there's always somebody that's gotta come up with a program that leaves the junk all over the place. And I don't think it should be changed.
I agree with you. I want you to understand something, council did not come up with this. This came from the code enforcement.
I know.
And that's why we're sitting in bed trying to look at it.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, that's, that's a good idea, but I still can't understand why it come up, that's what I'm getting at, from the code enforcement. They were the ones that made the law before, now it's gonna be changed. And it seems though, there's change in all the zoning ordinances that's been established to clean up the city, and now it's going the other way again.
Nothing's, nothing's gonna change, Mr. Wilson.
No, I know. I know it hasn't been changed, but it just seems funny that it's starting to come back up, that we gotta make a little revisions in the, in the thing. If it's gonna help, okay. But I just can't see, this is gonna be a tough one, as far as I'm concerned.
So you're saying you don't see a need for any change, right? You're saying you don't see a need to change it at all?
That's the way I feel about it, because I figured that there's a lot of people that's gonna say, hey, that's a winter rat, and it's not a winter rat. They're supposed to cover them up if they're gonna be a car that's used. You know, there's a lot of people's got them around. A man down on the corner of Anata and Seven, his cars are all taken care of, and those are covered up, they look pretty decent. But when they sit in the yard and the springs are hanging down, flat tires, that's all, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Dan, would you give us some insight as to the proposed changes and why you feel they're required?
These were mainly requests of us to change law relative to complaints that we had concerning winter rat vehicles. This law is the way it's written now, you would have, be able to have a vehicle on your premises, unlicensed, uncredited, and unregistered for a period of one year before it becomes an abandoned vehicle. The second proposal, the change that's in the law, deals with the tonnage of, size of vehicle that's allowed in residential property. And we've had a lot of complaints from plowpeople who do plowing in this type of operation, that the vehicles that they use are now larger than the weight that was once, one time proposed. And so we revised the weight so that now you can have up to a vehicle which takes a commercial license. Those are the two basic changes. They were generated by complaints from the constituents in the city, who asked us to make these changes. And what we do is propose them to you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Whereas by memo dated April 17th, from Commissioner Graham to the City Clerk, which he advised the clerk of expenditures, city funds, materials, labor, and equipment for trash metal, demolition material removal on premises at 802 Emery Street, be resolved that there is a levy against premises described above. They have specified, and the special assessment will take effect immediately. The amount of this special assessment plus interest of 24% per year shall be added to the 1999 City of Fulton tax bills if not paid in full prior to December 15th, 1998. Accepting city-owned property interest on said special assessment shall accrue effective as of the date of this resolution.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
Motion carried. The next item? Resolved that the salary proposal submitted by the Fulton Housing Authority dated April 23rd, 1998, which reflects a 3% increase in salaries for the fiscal year of 1997, 1998, and a 3% increase for fiscal year 1998, 1999, is hereby approved.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item? Resolved that the City Clerk be authorized and directed to advise to receive sealed bids in his office on or before Tuesday, May 19th, 1998, up to 2:00 PM, and to be publicly opened at 2:15, 2:15 PM on May 19th, 1998, in the Common Council Chambers of the Municipal Building located at 141 South First Street, Fulton, New York, for furnishing the DPW with one new and unused mounted hydraulic breaker in accordance with specifications prepared by the City of Fulton Engineering Department.
Ask a question. Maybe it's because I work behind a desk every day, but what does a hydraulic breaker break? Sidewalks?
This, this will be used in the downtown project. It's a, what they call a hole ram, goes on a backhoe or a track machine that'll hydraulically break up the concrete downtown.
Is there a motion?
Is that budgeted for, or is that a, we're gonna finance it?
This is going to be funded through CDA as part of our downtown, as our portion of
Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item? Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Arthur Jones 108 Ridge Road, Fulton, New York, to the Fulton Library Board to fill the unexpired term of Sheila Koski, said appointment effective April 27th, 1998, to expire December 31st, 1999, is thereby, hereby approved. Motion? Is there a notation?
No. These councils.
It says notation.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item? Resolved that the Mayor, Executive Assistant to the Mayor, and members of the common council be authorized to attend the New York State Conference of Mayor's Annual Meeting and Training School to be held from June 7th through 10th, 1998, in Saratoga Springs, New York.
Do you know what the cost of this is?
Nobody's budgeted, I don't know the exact cost.
I'll send the city some money. I'm not gonna go. Yes. Mayor has money in his budget.
Administrator has. I haven't heard from the council. I sent a letter out asking for a response as to how many people are going to attend with Mayor and the Executive Assistant. As of today, I've not heard anything. So if you're gonna attend, you gotta get to us as soon as possible so we can make the reservation.
We should know what it's gonna cost, because maybe you wanna have the Mayor and Executive Assistant go, you know, depending, I mean, how much money have you gotten in training for, you know, to do it?
Well, we're, we're going to, if we were to go, we would definitely do it the least expensive way.
No, I know, but you have to make reservations. Because we, you know, Joe, we went, remember?
That's why we have to know tonight so we can make the reservations.
I just was wondering how much money was budgeted. And how, you know, Joe, did you call down there, Joe?
We transferred, we transferred funds earlier this year into the training and travel.
I don't have a problem. You know, I won't be able to go anyway, and I went before, and I think it's a good thing, because there's a lot you can learn from it. Especially, I'd rather, I mean, my, my family, is I'd rather see some of the newcomers go to get the advantage of it.
Are there any members of the council that would be able to go during this timeframe of 7 to 10 June?
I can't make it to that timeframe. I can't either. I can't either.
You can't. Ted? Can you make it to that, June 7th through 10th?
I can't give a yes or no right now, Mayor.
Okay.
But I will for tonight.
I definitely sound like Mayor.
There's a lot of good, a lot of good information picked up at this conference. You know, when we went down when you were Mayor, Ron? And you meet a lot of other city officials, a lot of people in, a lot of mayors down there, and there's a lot of the executive assistants, aldermen, councilmen, and a lot of good ideas come back from this conference.
You share your problems that you're having with other people.
Is there a motion? All in? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item? Whereas at the meeting of the common council held on April 21st, 1998, the mayor was authorized to sign an amended agreement between the City of Fulton and Time Warner Cable, subject to the review of the City Attorney and... Whereas the City Attorney has reviewed and amended the agreement and asked that it be placed on the agenda for council approval. Now therefore be it resolved that the amended agreement between the City of Fulton and Time Warner Cable is hereby approved as per attached.
Excuse me, Your Honor. I've had several constituents who are elderly call me and talk to me out at various stores and different things about our meetings here. And they were wondering if we could, if we were able to show the meetings live, you know, the night of the meeting, instead of showing them on tape delay. And I was wondering if you could check with Time Warner and check with the fellow here who does the viewing for us, and see if we can get it shown the night of the meeting? If we could.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The next item? Resolved that the Mayor be authorized to sign the proposed contract between the City of Fulton and Sharon Martin of Shannon's Hot Dog Stand as per attached.
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I just wanna make, okay, go ahead.
Mayor, I just want to make, okay, go ahead. Sorry. Opposed?
Opposed?
I just want to make a comment. Okay. The Shannons have been very cooperative neighbors for a long time at Bullhead Point. I think they've been over there 12 years. The Martins continue to maintain a good facility. The Martins brought in the concrete picnic tables that we have over there. They maintain a clean area, and I think that they certainly deserve our support. Thanks.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the license agreement dated April 27th, 1998, between the Lock 3 Incorporated and the City of Fulton, which gives permission to the owner of the Lock 3 to erect an outdoor canopy to the front of its premises located at 24 South First Street, Fulton, New York, from May through October, 1998, as per attached.
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item?
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement between the City of Fulton and Fort Con Incorporated, 11 North Main Street, Suite 202, Cortland, New York, 13045, for providing forest management services at Great Bear Farm.
Mike, do you want to talk about this a little better?
Where's John? There he is.
So this is the start of the forest management program that will be at Great Bear, start at Great Bear and possibly move over into the North Bay area to selectively cull out the older trees and give the younger trees more room to grow, and also provide us with some income from the sale of the timber.
They manage the logging operations. This is the dog commander, and examining what we have makes some recommendations and manages the logging operations. I believe we have to pay him around $2,000.
Will they take bids, John?
Yeah, I don't think bids from different loggers, and also manage the operations so they don't take dollars that they want.
They have the expertise in the harvest that we don't.
Yeah, well, after I shoot the herd, Tony, you want to make sure we have some.
Yes. Any other questions?
We got a question. Now, with them and their logging, are they going to affect any smaller trees that are going to be in there, like with them with backhoes? Are people tramping through there? Aren't they going to kill any other plants or trees in there?
No, these are done on a selective basis, and that's why we hired this for a management of the logging operation so that that does not happen. These people know what they're doing and direct the operations of the loggers.
Is there a motion? Move it. Second. All in favor?
Just a sec, hold a second.
Is there any of that? I can't go there for a lot of years. I was the first camp in Brown. I think they should maintain a barrier in that tree between highway and sound barrier to an ordinary campground. Other than just calling a tree.
They intend to do that. We're not going to take them all up. Over there, have you been over there lately?
Yes, I have. Pretty, pretty thin.
We're looking at the couple of the big trees that have come down already, and one of them came down across the fence, the boundary fence. There's a couple of large ones that need to be taken out of there. We by no means mean to go in there and just.
I really like not to hurt, but I will thin again if they want to pay a little. If they do thin, pay a little attention, a tree or two is going to take its place. So we'll move the barrier south.
Most certainly. Yes, thank you. See, you have a motion in a second?
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item?
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement to grow property for the purpose of drilling a well on the property located on East River Road, South, in consideration of negating an easement agreement made on August 5th, 1994.
For information on that, Roger Parsons, can you give us some background?
As you said, we pretty much the last 50 years, we provide water to their neighbors who are well sites. What we'd like to do is drill a well. We'll make that.
Do I read this right? This is dated 1994?
Well, if there was an amended agreement, we had it in 94. The original agreement, I think, takes the 1948.
But the well that they're drawing off right now is going to be, no longer be used?
Right. We're going to ban it.
Which ones are?
It's definitely 6 and 7. The president, they're getting water, we call it Keller Spring. We're going to abandon the Keller Spring because we're going to drill another well on our property that's going to produce more water.
Is it Keller Spring, the well was affected by the water?
No, this is on, this is on the property that's south of it, between Miller Brewing Company and Long Beach. The over territory.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion? Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The next item?
Whereas at a meeting of the common council held on November 6th, 1997, a resolution of honor was passed for a slain police officer named John Richard Sowa, who was killed while escorting a woman to her apartment in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas John Richard Sowa lived in Fulton and attended Fulton Junior High School and G Ray Bodley High School, whereas a memorial service was held on October 25th, 1997, at the Prince of Peace Church to honor the memory of this brave heroic police officer who came from our community. Whereas police officers and dignitaries from all over central New York attended the memorial services held in honor of John Richard Sowa. And whereas Mrs. Christine Roth, the mother of this brave young police officer, has requested and donated a monument to be placed in the small park between Corporal Barrett Drive and Route 3 in honor of her son, and in honor of all police officers killed in the line of duty. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Stafford and members of the common council would like to thank Mrs. Roth for her thoughtfulness and generosity, and hereby accepts this monument, and will place this monument in this park in honor of all police officers across this nation who are killed in the line of duty.
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to recognize Mr. Roth and thank himself and his wife for this very generous contribution to our community. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the mayor, the City of Fulton, for all they've done, and also Mark Spahn, for all they've done for my family. Thank you.
Move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. The next item?
Whereas the City of Fulton Common Council proposes to undertake certain transportation, streetscape, and waterfront improvements known as the Fulton Bridge to Bridge Project, the proposed action. Whereas in accordance with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, regulations, the common council declared itself as lead agency for the purpose of conducting an environmental review of the proposed action in an unlisted action. Whereas the common council as lead agency determined that the proposed action may have a significant adverse environmental impact and required the preparation of a draft generic environmental impact statement and a final generic environmental impact statement. Whereas the lead agency set May 1st, 1998, as a final date by which comments on the final generic environmental impact statement would be accepted for consideration. Whereas the lead agency is caused to be prepared a finding statement in conjunction with the proposed action. Whereas this CCor finding identifying the mitigation measures which will form the basis by which the lead agency will make decisions regarding the proposed action. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Fulton Common Council hereby adopts the aforementioned finding statement. Be it further resolved that the common council shall incorporate into projects considered in the environmental impact process the mitigation measures included in the final findings statement.
I'll move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item?
Resolved the City Chamberlain be authorized to make the appropriate contingent transfers for retro pay for the CSEA and the CEA supervi- supervisory units, as well as the increases for the settlement of the CSEA union contract as per attached.
Just cover it all. Just cover it all. This is all the 97 retro and a full year's worth for the increase.
Retro for both units, 98 increase for the service unit, the supervisory unit, we did not include in there. We're going to try to work that out of the current budget. Are there any other questions on that?
Is there a motion? Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Elks Club for having all of us over for a very nice meal before the meeting tonight. It's their part of the Youth and Government Day. And I would like to thank all of the students that have come over tonight to be a part of this meeting and to be a part of our local government. And I hope that they have learned a little bit about how local government works, because they are going to be the faces that sometime in the future are going to sit here and have to make the decisions that the council has to make. And their involvement and their interest now is extremely important. And I'd like to thank them again for coming. We now need a motion to go to executive session. We need a motion to go to executive session on pending litigation.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're in executive session.
You make a decision too quick?
Yeah.
We throw pennies, we throw pennies at this.
Penny tails up.
That's why I left it there. Heads up, you can pick them up, right?
You're supposed to kick them.
I was thinking I was three months old.
There's been a request that they're, check and see if it's possible, and then we'll report back at the next meeting. Everybody's back. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So be it.
Second. Move it. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Needing adjourn.